Mr. Chairman, can we remind everyone that's on line to mute their devices if they're not speaking at this time? Because we're getting a little bit of background. Well, you can do that, I guess. A little play to leave?
Play to leave.
Well, you can do that, I guess. A little play to leave?
Play to leave.
And I pray to the Lord to be with us, to the United States of America, and to the Republic which is ours. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I repeat a motion to the President and the Attorney General.
Still moving, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, let me know when they say aye.
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 Is there anyone here on the whole round to, uh, is there reporting law enforcement?
Ralph South Park. Ralph, hey, ready?
What it does is like a fart.
Good afternoon, Sheriff.
Good afternoon, sir, and all the county commissioners. It's always good to see y'all. Uh, I was asked to speak briefly on, on crime in, uh, Scotland County. I did send an email requesting the chief to be here also. Um, I'm not sure if we got the second email, Mr. Patterson. But I never heard another response. So, uh, basically what I want to talk briefly on is just what's happening, happening in the county. And, uh, what I'd like to do first is, is I have some statistics here that I printed off for you. And it goes from January to May of two thousand and nineteen. And it goes from January to May, our current year. And if you look to the far right where it says change, where you see a minus sign, minus sign, that's where we are to the good. I will go ahead and tell you as far as the crime rate dropped down the first five months in the county, that last year at this time, last year at this time, we had five hundred and twenty-two incident reports. And it covered all crime, property crime, homicides, uh, rape and then enters. We had five hundred and twenty-two.
How many are here?
From January the first of two thousand and nineteen to May the thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, no, it was, uh, five months. What I did was put it on the same sheet. So you'll have the first five months of two thousand and nineteen and the first five months of this year. And let you look at a comparison instead of trying to, we're not finished with this year yet. But last year, the first five months, we had five hundred and twenty-two incidents in the county, which was less than two thousand and eighteen. And that include, uh, pretty much anything that you can think of that deals with crime. And those are listed here on this sheet. This is what's reported, uh, to, uh, SBI and the FBI at the end of the year on, on what type of, uh, of, uh, incidents that we had. We had five hundred and twenty-two last year. And I'm pleased to say this year, uh, dealing with the same five months, we've only had two hundred and eighteen. That's a fifty-eight percent reduction in our incident reports. We've had no, no fadals. I'm going to use the word fadals. Of course, same time last year, we didn't, we didn't have any, any fadals. What I'm excited about, as you look at this sheet and you start looking at offenses like rape and sexual assault, uh, aggravated assault, simple assault. Last year during these first five months, we had sixty, sixty-six. This year, first five months, we've only had twenty-three, which is a sixty-five percent decrease in crime. Uh, I can only think of, because there's not any showing from last year, but we've had, in the first five months of this year, we've had, uh, and this has happened in the last, last three, four weeks of three, three incidents that dealt with firearms. We had a gentleman that, uh, was arguing with his neighbor in Wagerum. And, uh, the firearm accident that went off and he was, uh, met back to, uh, Durham, his home now. We had an incident, uh, not far from Wagerum to where, uh, it was an accident. And, uh, he's doing okay. And then last weekend during, uh, the event at Outback, uh, we had, uh, one that was shot there. But he was released. All three of these dealt with either neighbors or, uh, the, the last one I just spoke of, they were actually family members that went to the park on their own. That's something that I'd like to talk with you briefly after, after we finish this, uh, dealing with, uh, with the Outback. But there's a lot of good information on here. It comes straight from our, from RMS, which is where we enter our reports. And, uh, it is what it is. I'm proud to say that there are blocks where we're a hundred percent to the good and we haven't had those problems. Now, I contribute that not just being proactive on my officers being on the road, uh, but also for the programs that we have implemented just for, uh, crime prevention. And I've printed you off a sheet of that so you can look at it so that, uh, we don't have to go through it tonight. But every one of these programs deal with crime prevention. And most of them deal directly with the person. For instance, uh, our, our mobile patrol where they can report crime. We established a new app called Neighborhood. Some of, some of you may have already received a postcard in the mail from me. It's a, it's a, it's a, uh, a free site. We have right now nine hundred, I mean, nine groups in Scotland County where they communicate with each other on Facebook, but it's private. And we can communicate with each group because I'm, I'm over, over all of them. And, uh, a lot of good information on there. I ask y'all to look at this when you have time. If anyhow you do Facebook, you'll notice every, every night at nine o'clock, and I've been doing it for a year or so, a nine P M. routine. It's free. All I do is get on Facebook and at nine o'clock, I send out a message with a nice cartoon picture. It says, uh, it's, it's time to do your nine P M. routine. How about just secure your, your property, your doors, turn your lights on. It's, it's working. These programs are working. Us at Scotland County Sheriff's Office, it's not about being inactive or active. We're being proactive. Uh, it's, it's a concern. Understand what's happening, what's going on in the county. And, uh, you know, there's no better way to show that the programs are working and that we're being proactive other than facts, and the facts are on the sheet of paper because it shows. Uh, I'm excited about it. I'm excited about where we're going. I know that we're having a lot of issues inside the city limits of Laurinburg. We have, we have, uh, offered our services to Chief Williams. We actually had right fifteen officers out that weekend that, uh, they made the ninety charges and confiscated firearms. Us at the sheriff's office, we've been doing it every other week. We'll be doing it again Friday night for our, our citizens in the county. All the programs on this sheet is for everybody in the county, the city, the more and wealthier. I try not to step on Chief Williams' toes. People call me a lot. I know he probably gets a lot of calls about me and we respect that. But, but I am here for him if he, if he needs my help. Uh, how are we going to fix the problem with all the shootings? I don't have the complete answer for it because what we have is if they're not part of a gang, uh, they've made up a name for a gang. I really don't see that we have a big per se gang problem. We have a family and friendship problem. Because they, one minute they're socializing, they visiting, they're having a good time, and the next minute they're doing a drive-by. And it's almost impossible to stop that because you can't follow around for anyone else. I think it starts a lot with, with the upbringing. I know what my dad used to do to me, and I know what I've done to my girls, and it's about holding them accountable. I think that our judicial system is a big problem for us. It's because these guys or ladies can go out and do, uh, some crime, severe crime. And, uh, before you know it, they're back out on the streets. Either the charges has been reduced. I always know because I keep up with, uh, through the sheriff's office, that I know when my crime levels in certain areas are going to start back. Because I know who was just released from jail. And we know where it got and it never fails. It's not profiled. It's just the history of that person shows. Now, what we've been trying to do at the sheriff's office is combat that problem before they're released. I think I've shared with y'all many times, it's been a passion of mine, uh, for us not to forget about our inmates that's incarcerated in Scotland County Sheriff's Office. Somewhere in there, there's some good, and that's what I look for. And we've started a program, the Ministry Group is out of Union County. It's called, uh, Safe Communities. It's life-changing experience. They come in, uh, and do seven weeks of programs, three hours a day, three days a week. If you've been to my Facebook page, you'll see where we're standing around, holding each other hands. These guys are going through this program and their lives are changing. And these are the guys that's accepting the fate because they're trying to get a deal from the judge when they go to the fore. We're talking about, I'm seeing changes because where we used to have ten or fifteen allegations a week, we're not having this problem anymore. I mean, I had one fellow that was part of the program whose finger was bitten off. And instead of retaliating, he showed goodness. And we never, we haven't had any problems out of him yet. So my, I wish I could tell you more about Scotland, the county part of it. You know, we have this nineteen thousand people in the county. The city has fifteen thousand. I, I, I did math today. We only have twenty-six people. If I look at it, we only have twenty-six people that is providing, uh, the safety to our county. And, and seeing these, these numbers drop. And I say that, I say it this, I compared my Scotland County Sheriff's Office with the Laurinburg Police Department. And I looked at what the Laurinburg Police Department have. They have a detective division, they have an SRO division, they have a, uh, patrol division, and then they have three, uh, administrative offices. So I broke mine down, then I looked at my administration, I looked at my patrol division, I looked at my detective division, and I looked at my SROs. The city has thirty-six in that particular position. I have twenty-six. That's nine, nine of ten more that they have. Of course, there's, there's not as many people that lives in the city, but we have nineteen thousand, maybe not in the county. But it shows that our numbers haven't increased in that area. But because my guys are out there working and my ladies are out there working hard and being proactive, you're not seeing things that's happening out in the county that is happening in the other place.
Sure, Chris.
Yes, ma'am.
The reason I asked Mr. Patterson to ask the law enforcement, uh, the sheriff and Duke to come report today. I am so tired of my community and, and the crap town people. Uh, all I can hear, every other weekend, a black young man is being killed every, at least once a month. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
It's one killing after another. Yeah, they're killing each other now. I can't deny that. Nobody's shooting them. They're killing each other.
Yes, ma'am.
But every other, like, this once a month at least, somebody is being killed. And you talk about that big shooter that happened two weeks ago, you know? And the girl that, you know, that shooting, that killed a son and a shooting girl. So I hate to hear that Scotland County, that they don't say what this in Scotland County crime rate is so high. They don't look at the county versus the city and look at total.
That's right, yes, ma'am.
And I realize that the crime is in the city. It's basically in the city. And I hate that, that Duke couldn't come to my, explain because I want to know if there's a gang involvement there or what. It's, it's pumping this, this kind of energy into this killing.
I, Ms. Goldston, I, you know, I, I sit at home all the time to figure it out. I think the biggest thing that bothers me about this job is when, when I came into the office, I was hoping I could fix everybody's problems. And I realized very quickly that I was going to die of a massive heart attack if I tried to do it because I can't. I think, uh, Duke is as concerned about it as I am. I look, I even this week, uh, and I try to keep up with numbers. And, and to show you what I've done, as, as, as I keep up with where, where incidents are happening, that's where I sign my officers. If I have a couple of break-ins and they're happening up in Wagerum, then, uh, those officers are assigned that area. And some people will call it micromanaging. I call it being proactive. Because of, of the county commissioners' approval, I have GPSs on all my vehicles. If I sign my officer to work Wagerum because there's an issue there, if he goes outside that jail fence or if he's idling too long, or if he's stopped too long, then it warns me. Now, do I call them up all the time? No, I have certain limits set up on it. But it's a way that I can make sure because at the end of the day, my responsibility, or y'all sitting in this room, my family and everyone else in this county, those inmates down at Scotland County Detention Center, they're my responsibility. And, you know, and we've talked about it. I know I've come before you several times and we haven't always agreed sometimes. I think I've gone a little bit overboard and I apologize for that. I think one of the best things we ever did is when y'all passed the gun ordinance, we had to make changes. But we're not having, we still have some gunfire. But, but it really helps when you pull up to somebody's house and they're out there drinking, cutting the food, firing a firearm. You tell them, listen, I don't want to arrest you. I just need to make you aware that there's a... We haven't had to arrest anybody, uh, for that. But it has helped us when, when we've gone to a call. I pulled the stats on the inmates and I broke them down, uh, just to see where we were at. We have, uh, right now in New Harrington, about eighty inmates in our detention center. We were up to a hundred and thirty coronavirus came around. Uh, we can, we can say the coronavirus did it. I just think that we got the right judges in there and they started looking at it and we started releasing people. We almost reduced half of our population in the jail, which is about eighty-five dollars a day per person if they're healthy. So, uh, and I'm hoping we can maintain that, that problem, uh, of not getting back up there. But I pulled those that's back there and I looked at violent crimes. And we have right at fifteen, twenty back there for violent crimes such as, uh, assault with a deadly weapon inflicted seriously injured and murdered. And I not only looked at that, but I looked at, uh, how it was following in, 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 in the minority or the race category. And I'm, I'm shocked. There were maybe one or two that I remember that was actually African-American, killing a white or a white killing another African-American. This thing is white on white, black on black, and Native American on Native American. I think we had, we had one in there where it was, that involves a Native American, uh, and a gentleman down on Junk Road a couple of years ago. But it's not a, these, these aren't, these aren't racial issues, you know? We're not dealing with any racial issues in the jail because they're killing each other.
That's what I'm saying. They're killing each other.
Yeah, they're killing each other. And so I'm hoping that, you know, I've got twenty-four months, twenty-six months left, uh, on, on this term. And I'm hoping that, uh, we'll be able to say by the time I finish that we see a big change in that. But I believe what's going to have to happen is we, and, and we're trying to do it, is we've got to have more community events where our law enforcement officers are fellowshiping in those areas where we're having issues. And I'm not saying that they're all in the city. We've been blessed a lot of time because those two or three shootings that we had could have easily been a fatal because by God's grace and mercy, that their life wasn't taken. One of the shots went through the guy's neck and come out the other end. And that's nothing but God to fix that problem. But we, we're never going to stop it all, but we sure can do a whole lot better. There's a lot more to be done. I think probably Chief Williams, issue or my issue is you don't always have the funds. Because just like when we did that impact, and, and I will say, Kevin, Mr. Patterson, he's never complained about our earthquake. I mean, he's, he's, he's talked with me. But I think he understands, uh, what we're trying to do out there and, and it kind of balances itself out.
You think that, excuse me, you think that when this coronavirus thing, uh, kind of calms down and gets back to something being normal, normal, you know, being normal again, you think that the church and the community can begin to have some type of community-wide meeting and, and, and addressing subjects and try to, you know, communicate to, to our young people?
I, I think, uh, this is what I, I believe. We have, we have seven neighborhood watches in the county that we do. Uh, sometimes we go, there might be two people there. Sometimes you go, it might be ten. It takes one person to change. What I think needs to happen, and it's happening in other counties, is instead of having these little, uh, neighborhood watch, uh, meetings, we, we need to get the churches involved and let's start having a church neighborhood watch meeting or church watch, a safety program. You know, these little ten or twelve that's showing up every, every Monday when you have a meeting, you're not reaching anybody unless they go back. And, and people are not, and those that's coming to the neighborhood watch are not, uh,
Not the problem.
No, they're not the problem. And you hope that they go back and they tell it. They're not going to come, these folks are not going to come to us. We have to go to them. I think that law enforcement has been their own enemy over the years. I remember growing up, how a police officer would stop and talk to you on the corner. You know, that's, that doesn't happen a lot anymore. And so we're going to have to build that relationship back. And the only way that law enforcement is ever going to build it back in the community is our churches getting involved because people realize that's a medium. Uh, even though now I have law enforcement there and then I may, I won't go to the, some I may recognize. Now I have maybe possibly those as part of the criminal, criminal, criminal element that's there. That's the only way it's going, that I can think of. Because I'm always researching and trying to find something that's going to bring our numbers down, uh, just a little bit more. Because to me, whether I have two murders this year and I have one next year, that's three human lives that have lost. And who knows? There might have been a Billy Graham in there. And, uh, but it's senseless, the, the way that, way it's happened. Now, I will say this, I'm, I'm very proud and honored to live in Scotland County because the last couple of weeks, they have really stepped up and, and showed other counties and other states how protest is supposed to be done. Yes, uh, we, we receive many calls of maybe possibly burning down, somebody burning down John Blue House or they doing damage to, uh, the health department. Uh, matter of fact, uh, Saturday and Sunday night, I was getting, uh, messages from nine-one-one center. Folks calling in on their phones saying, we, we're going to burn the John Blue down. And, and we, to be safe, we put officers at those locations. But, uh, but I talked with Mr. David Wells, uh, when we were out there. And he was thanking me for us being out there watching the John Blue house. And I said, David, I said, you know, we no longer live, uh, I didn't use this phrase, in the gripping days. You can go over there right now, twenty-four seven, you can drive through that John Blue, blue property, anywhere you want to. Because they leave that back door open that comes from the field and they leave the wooden gate open from the, uh, from the front. And when we were sitting over there the first Saturday night, I think there was eight or nine cars that pulled in there. And they weren't coming in there to do any damage. They're coming in there, I would think they were going to do any damage. But they were coming to do something. They parked back there or, uh, they have a lot of traffic. They go, they're going to try to work on some gates. So there's a lot that we can do ourselves to make things better. And one of them is our community trusts us enough to let us know when something, something is going down. Whether it is or not, they, they let us know. And there's just so much you can do. And, uh, but we really have to try of putting everybody together. And we have different events in the county and in the city where, where they're not separated, but where we're all, all together. Somebody will talk.
I'd like to talk to you more when, you know, this, uh, thing is lifted up a little bit. The situation with the virus. And, uh, talk to you more about organizing some church groups and getting community involved and, and, uh, maybe you can come and speak and, and let us, you know, we just got to get the community involved.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, you came to my church, you know, that, that weekend, and you spent the whole day just by out there. And, you know, that's a good thing if people see you in the church, at, at their church.
I, I, I agree with you. Uh, I apologize that it's, it's boring. I like boring. I mean, I'm glad I not come in here and say that we had people that were seriously injured and that we got people, uh, I'm just, I'm thankful. Uh, and, uh, everybody in this room contributed. Everybody contributes to where we are. But I believe, I truly believe that programs, and we've got a slew of them, and these are just for the crime prevention programs. And I talk about our seniors, uh, and I, I constantly push them. But I believe if the community, if the community would come on board on these programs, we would really see a, a, a big difference.
I can see this, Mr. Sheriff. This past week, I was in a senior citizen home, eighty-three-year-old person. And they comment about one of your programs, they got a call.
Yes, sir.
Folks were checking on.
We, we've had that in places two thousand and eighteen.
And we appreciate that.
And if it works. And then what we try to do, of course, I say them happy birthday on that program when it's his birthday, it just changes over. But we also try to take them out twice a year to build that, that relationship. But we have a lot of good programs. We've got programs, uh, these, the, that, there's that. Now, not being used by many agencies across the United States. So we spend a lot of time researching and very few cause anything, and that are you okay, it's free. We, we responded to several people's houses where they had fallen. And if we had not, uh, responded based on that are you okay, uh, who knows what the outcome, what the outcome would have been. Uh, this man.
I think, and we've got to address the crime problem. I think that we need to include in the language of anti-crime, anti-balance.
Yes.
I mean, they are one and the same, but it, the black on black, white on white, that's American Indian, that is, that's fine.
That's violence this week.
Pure, unmitigated violence. If someone wants to solve every problem, about drive-by shootings and keep going.
That's right.
I think they're, they're total risk. And you go and arrest the person they shot, don't want to press charges, your hands are down.
That, that happens a lot too.
It happens a lot. But I think that in the language of finding this problem that we have in our community, that we need to talk about the level of violence that we have around the city.
Yeah.
Because if you reduce the violence, you will reduce the crime.
Yes, ma'am.
That's why I wondered was the gay activity. Usually gay activity breaks more. But you said that really you don't see it in the city of Laurinburg.
I don't, I don't see a lot of, of, a lot of per se gay activity. Not saying that we don't have any. Uh, normally what it deals with is a drug deal going bad. Uh, and like I said, and, and I'm, I'm excited about this, but I'm not excited about crime. It's not, uh, our, our violence is not racial because we're hurting each other. And, and, uh, so that tells me that, that there, there's another, another source of why they, why, why we're doing it, why are we hurting each other? And, uh, and it, and most of it is... And, uh, and it, most of it is drug-related, where, where, uh, it went bad, money-wise. But that's what it is.
Just so, just so you know, I shouldn't have said this at the beginning. I saw him this afternoon, and he told me he had something prior that he couldn't find.
Hey, so, I'm not gonna, uh, mention this owner here, but I, I'd like to pass it around and let you look at it. Uh, there's seventy-seven, there's seventy-seven calls. And I need to add, uh, I need to total it out at a hundred and eleven because it did. This is all from one location, and it's a serious problem for me and for our community. Because this is not simple. This is not, this is not, uh, uh, knocking a window out or you scratched somebody's car. These, these calls are, are, they're just uncalled for, the many causes that we have to keep going to this location. And I'd like for you to look at it and maybe do a brain, brainstorm or something and see if we can come up with something. Because now I've got the community complaining about, uh, this. And if I don't do something, we're gonna have, we're gonna have some deaths. Uh, because we, we've been very close.
Well, just sort of, and, and I think that what you're talking about, we don't feel that here tonight. Maybe this is something we take back and study.
Yes.
And have Johnson look at it, see if there's something we need to do in the close session.
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna meet with the person, hopefully sometime this week. But it's just, uh, it's just out of my hands of, of the calls they're going to. I don't know if there's, but if you just look at it, you may have to make a copy, Mr. Ivey, but, uh, or I can email it. But there's, there's thirty-four more events, and they're all dealing with the same thing. And they're pretty, pretty, uh, in the same sequence of what's, what's happening. So, if you ask, I'll just, I'll take it in here, it's kind of, but if you have any questions about, uh, any of that, uh, you can call me on a cell phone or email.
People already go to her. Because she's already financed, you know, so people go to her on a regular basis anyway. And a lot of times they go to her to talk about, hey, what's he want to think about this? So it's already in the chain of command. But ultimately, this is just.
For weeks. When it was, we. I believe you stated that we were talking about doing this. So we got to do it.
Yes, sir.
And at some point, Kevin and I had this conversation. The organizational chart will be amended to change the direct line of supervision between assistant county manager and. Kevin, and it will reduce the number of people that directly report, Kevin, which is something we talked about every year. And he has too many people that report directly to him. And I think many of us on this board have agreed that if we can change that a little bit, it will be helpful. And this does that.
And also, it does have the purchase of the additional, of the new voting.
Well, Mr. Sculston and I went to that presentation about the, and it's, it's just to give you a short version of it. It's not online systems. It was also, it almost looks like what we named, but it does, program does some different things. Like if you underbode and you valid and it's going to give a warning, hey, you underboded, is that what you want to do?
Not underbowed, not.
So if there's street, so if it's one of those that says bust for two, you will vote for one. Or if you voted for two on something that you can't vote for one, it'll, it'll tell, it'll give them a warning before that ballot.
We need to talk to them about that.
But it is not an online system.
What you get all this back, but does anybody else realize that you didn't run for it?
Uh, I don't know, but nobody can know unless.
I didn't know what it meant, no.
No, no, I think it gives a whoever's standing there. And when the machine, it gives them, if they're looking at a string that says underbode, and then that's what they say, you know.
To no manual take the ballot.
No, well, you got to manually take the ballot and put it in. But when the machine sees you underbowed or overbowed or whatever, it's going to give that operator an error. And they're going to ask you, you want to take a look at the ballot winner. That's the way you.
Something going about it.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's why they ask you. It doesn't make you, it doesn't make you, you don't have to, to do it to change it, but it'll, it'll just bring it to your attention. Have any difference this way, or maybe you didn't do it back and didn't even know it was there.
Sometimes you're pointed to advantage it to do vote for only one in the whole category and it gets that.
And ultimately, the ballot doesn't change. It is still a paper ballot. So if all else goes wrong, you still have a paper ballot and someone can sit down. Now, with it, the total, the amount of the budget, the increase, talking about some number of the items that we've reduced. The school debt increased, so that drove up the number. But with that, the lease payment that the schools makes to the county also increases. So we're still funding the schools and then the schools write us a check, so we write the new debt service out of that. We did still have in here a drop in the estimated collection rate of 0.25%. Reduction in motor vehicle collections for three months at 50%. We do, that should tick up towards the end of the year. Afterwards, you have people who are still going to have to pay those taxes. But right now, it's there, so it's just being.
Directly, you're going to make that up, huh?
Yes, sir. So that is a $452,000 decrease in property, property tax revenues, I've estimated. Also, looking at a 10% decrease in sales tax. That would be for the entire year totaling 712,000. Again, this is just conservative. Breaking this down, and also you have the new sheet, the new packet was handed out, not in the agenda. It's the same information. Just breaking down the percentage costs of how the total expenditures go. Of course, since the county is a service industry, your local government is a service industry, 48% is in personnel. After that, operations at 34%, big part of that includes education. Current expense and your five million capital includes the debt service, which a large portion of that is the capital that we pay to education. Also, breaking it down, the total budget, 44 million, on how the total funds are broken out of this. 14.5 million go into education, 9.4 is in public safety. Education is the school system as well as community college. Public safety is law enforcement, jail, EMS, 911, rescue squad, forestry service. Human services, primarily health, DSS, veteran services. Internal services, that is administration, finance, public buildings, courthouse, general services. Cultural resources are primarily the library and parks and recreation. Economic development is, well, the incentives as well as the payments that we were doing for total economic development. Community services, those are inspections department, transportation, elections. Well, no, elections is a government. Register of deeds. Taxes up in internal services. Other services are some of your flow through monies, JCPC, humane society, or, yeah, humane society. Governance is, of course, government body, elections are your primary areas there. And of course, governance is up this year over last year because we have presidential elections coming up. And we have the purchase of $90,000.
Can we get that equipment purchased in here by November?
Sir?
Can we get it purchased in here by November? I mean, is it going to be ready?
Yes, yes, sir. It should be ready by November, and I think they're looking, if they had any special elections, they were actually using that to test. And again, this is just showing the breakdown. So if you're, sometimes visuals are better than just pure numbers. But then, going back in and looking at the allocation of the tax dollars. The revenues that go against the department, social services is a $7 million budget. But then again, 5 million of that comes back through federal and state. So, but looking on how the allocation of tax dollars, and these are property taxes and sales and sales. Education is 12 million. And of course, the restricted sales tax are allocated back to education. Going back in, the public safety, it's over seven, human services at three. Because health department and DSS have such high, have high reimbursement ratios. And just going back down through the same, the exact same category. And again, looking at, here are the allocations, just a visual aspect. And this allocation amount, this does go out on the back of the tax bill. And again, just your general allocation changes. Again, personnel changes, 1% cost of living adjustment, that would be across the board. We do have increases in health insurance and retirement's costs. There are no changes in benefits. We do have in here, I mentioned, finance officer, but it also has reclasses for our public buildings crew. Our custodians of public grounds, our maintenance staff, as well as library. Especially our custodians and maintenance. And these are just to get these departments to market, and it's a small number of employees. But right now, our, we're having difficult time recruiting for custodians and maintenance. A large part of it is if, for the people that are applying for this, they could go to the city of Lornburg if they have an opening and make more right off the bat. So that's the reason we're looking to increase those positions. Especially our custodians, they're also our lowest paid, are some of our lowest paid.
On the custodians, what's the entry? Twenty per hour?
Approximately $10 an hour. Also with this, in this recommendation, because I know this was a discussion point with the, the liaison committee about keeping funding level consistent. Though that was never, I don't know that it was fully approved by both boards.
What is that now?
The liaison committee's topic about keeping funding consistent from this year to next year.
And I remember the liaison committee did recommend that we stay flat.
So that recommendation is in.
Take that back to their respective boards, is that not right?
So that is the recommendation that's in here. Of course, the presentation from the schools and the finance committee, they did a calculation of the funding expense, or the current expense funding at 10,289,000. I looked at it, they used the calculated amount from the prior year, what would have been the calculated funding formula. I went back in and inserted the actual funding, recalculating it. With that, with the calculation using the actual funding would be 10,137,000.
So you went through the same thing I did with it, trying to figure out the right numbers.
Yes.
And I don't know if that's why, you know, that's $150,000 difference in the calculation there. And I came up with a little bit different number than that. But the problem is getting the right information to plug into this thing and to make it come out right. And, and, you know, I don't like the fact that PPI is relegated that to its local system. They should be able to handle that, just like the state. But you can see how difficult it is to get this because getting the actual numbers.
I have it in mind, everybody just table. Percent, 5%. Got to watch that. Cut it more than they, you know, if you do.
How about? How about a lower or higher?
You cut it more than that, you're going to lose all your low will.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I was just talking about, I was just talking about, if you're bold, you use that right.
Have you been talking about that since?
Right, I just thought the numbers.
And what I did, I got, they sent me their calculation this week. So they sent me their calculation, so I used the data they had. I just put in, I put in the starting number, the actual starting number, where I think they were using, assuming we never, we were always using the funding formula, is where they put it.
Well, one of the things that come up on this, they say, one of the things is the fact that A and B. And this is.
Yes.
And county and state don't agree on what that A and B is. Usually don't. And, and so that places, which number you can use, excuse me, say, it's number you count it.
Right.
And, and so that, you know, 100 students, that's a quarter of a million dollars, right there. It's in that fluctuation, the way it's yelled. That, that's part of the problem is, is just getting, knowing the right number to plug into that thing to make our.
And making sure you're using that same number consistently.
Right.
But the big piece is that we're still below the funding formula, the demanding ones.
Yes.
According to what we're copying. I know, but I, you can see how easy it is to get two different numbers.
Yes.
What they used A and B from last year, right? Because it couldn't possibly.
My revelation from the last liaison committee, after a fairly gleeful discussion, both, all six of us decided that we would go back to our respective boards and recommend that it stays at 10,000, I'm sorry, 10,44,895 figure. And I think we came to our board and, and that's what was said. I don't, I don't, I don't know what the school board did with that information.
I think they did the same thing with one hour total.
There was, I just actually, okay, good deal.
Yeah, I, I just don't know if the board of education approved that. But I bring this up only because there is a difference in between what the superintendent recommended and what is in the budget.
What did he recommend?
Yeah, the number you came up with was 10,44,824. All right, thanks, sir.
And what did he recommend?
10,289,213.
He recommended 10,289.
But what they're going to get is the 10,44,895. And that is, yeah.
Unless they will file it.
I haven't heard.
I, I say, I'm not saying anything with that. I was under the impression that the liaison committee, they had agreement to that.
We did for 10,44,895. Mr. Secretary, when he came and then he correctly followed on, said that they would not entertain anything left. Then they wouldn't cut it anymore. Except that they had agreed to 10,44,824.
That's definitely mine.
But, but I'm, I have to talk to some people on the liaison, and that's what they're saying. Not the board.
That's what it came for the board, I didn't want that, sir.
With that, the solid waste fund, this is a little bit different. This is different than the number presented, we discussed earlier. With this, this is looking at an increase in tipping fees across the board by $2 a ton. With this, we've wound up, actually, during the pandemic, we had more trash. And.
We do a project.
Right, is that right?
We have more trash and it is light and it weighs less. Which is an issue when we're sending up weight. So we have more light loads, which means we wind up paying surcharges because we're taking up more space with less weight. So this is addressing that issue. I know this is new, so if, even with this, it is the recommendation. It'll keep us in a solid position. But if the board is, wanted to delay this one year, that's, you know, that's not going to be significantly, that's not going to hurt our bottom line significantly for one year. But it would be something that we would need to address next year also. Because we've not made any increment, had not, we have not had any increases in the number of years. But our tipping fee does go up every year with inflation.
My thinking is that we do not get like the work of old, we need to go in and buy the hood and do this $2 increase.
And of course, with that, because we're doing the surcharge or the convenience fee, individuals can still take their trash to the convenience sites at no additional cost. So this would impact the city of Lornburg, commercial hours and some, and businesses. And then just a breakdown of the budget for expenditures.
The $2 is not going to affect the availability.
No, sir. No, sir. After, in the capital, after we complete this needs growth site and it is open, we would continue to look at replaced, making upgrades at our other convenience sites. Going, putting in compacters or replacing the compacters at 401 North and Paul Monroe. We would also go back in, not necessarily this year, but go back in and make additional changes into livings and quarters at some time as well. Some of that will be a redesign of the flow through. Also, just looking at the tipping fees that we have paid over the years, back in 2017, we had to drop. But that's also, I believe that is also when the city of Lornburg was taken, would direct haul in to Robinson County for a period of time, so. Yeah. But it's just been a consistent increase in this. So, and some of that's our volumes have been increasing as well as our cost of maintenance. And again, just looking at the fee structure, again, we're just looking across the board at a $2 a ton. The only one that would actually impact the city of Lornburg would be the transfer station costs. They have their own leaf and limb vegetation, vegetative site that's, that they take their limbs to. Unless there is some type of extraordinary event happen. Water districts, there have been no, there have been no changes in the water districts since the last time we've discussed those. Again, looking at a $700,000 budget, a $675,000 budget for those. We are looking, we have contracted with engineer to look at the Cascades facility, the water tower we have there. Looking at designing a process, the elevated tower, I think it's a 400,000 gallon tower, of repiping the connection back to municipal. Right now, we're pulling off the water line that's going into some of the existing lines that feeds the ground tank, then up to the elevated tank, back to Cascades for fire protection. What we're looking at doing is just putting in new pipe, cutting everything else off, putting new piping from the municipal line to the elevated tank, and then from the elevated tank back over to Cascades for fire suppression. If we dump 400,000 gallons of water in Cascades and that fire is not out, it is not going. So, and we have been in contact with Cascades, the engineer will as well, to make sure that fire protection, fire flow is still there. But just because of the age of the system that we have, we don't have, there are more pipes out there that there are no plans for. So it's just improves the system in power. And of course, there is no fee, there is no recommended change in fee structure in our water districts. Fire tax, again, we're looking at it. We do have $436,000 listed as fire trucks. We have one fire truck in the account that has been ordered and will be delivered this year. We will not order another fire truck this year. That amount is about $360,000. The additional number is in there, just, that's where we, we plan to accumulate those additional funds. We did allocate an additional $10,000 per station to go out in the allocation to the stations. The repairs, that $10,000 is for the, amount that's been set aside for significant repairs, not maintenance, but repairs of county-owned fire trucks.
And that is something we've read last.
Yes.
But that, that $10,000 is not per station, that's a total.
Correct. Yes, sir. The 911 funds, this amount has changed because we did receive about two weeks ago, a new allocation of the 911 funds from the state. They're going to allocate $162,000 this year first. They had a much higher number, but then again, they took the telephone bill that we were paying. And now they're paying that, or most of that directly. So they took the revenue expenditures out. So this is the allocation of what's left. We are now using $45,000 in fund balance to upgrade some of the servers in our 911 system. And again, these are the restricted 911 funds. These are not, this is not the general fund EOC 911 operation. And that is, that is the summary of this, the budget. Yes, sir.
No questions then.
I'll make a comment. I think it's remarkable that we can do this, not change the tax rate, and improve some things and have decreased revenues. So this budget shows good effort, creativity.
And a lot of hope.
A lot.
And a lot of hope.
Well, with those projections, sales tax and property tax budget being implemented, I don't think they're going to come in that. So it can only, it could actually get much better.
Yes.
I mean, we'll be. The cautious and conservative will pay off.
Right.
And if it comes in better, we'll be in much better shape next year.
Be a lot easier picture.
Great passwords.
No more comments, no questions, then we'll move to public hearing.
Yes, sir.
And there are people out there. Who was at the desk?
And we are inviting people in, or allowing people in, one at a time. We are requesting that everybody who comes in wear face cover. We have face coverings available at this.
Do we have an email?
No emails.
Do we have an email company?
I know we do. Nothing off the website, nothing like that. Yes. One thing that is in part of the Parks and Recreation budget, $20,000 is designated for architect, architect engineer for developing site plans for, for facilities.
How much, $20,000? It's good to see you all. I just wanted to come and let you all know how meaningful it would be to have a facility like the one in Wager in Laurel Hill. I know that, you know, boosts morale tremendously, and it would be for the whole county to use. I speak on behalf of many young people. I'm the new pastor of Laurel Hill Baptist Church, and we've used it throughout the years, the past building, all been not very good, but with the new facility, it would definitely enhance a place for the young people to be and participate in a safe environment, and I just know it would help build morale and surround communities as well. So whether it be, you know, Laurel Hill, it's very, it's a pretty, pretty large area, and a lot of people live there too. So I just want, I just want to be represented and letting you all know how meaningful it would be, and I appreciate you taking the time to let me come in and share. So that's really not all I have, but it's another thing.
I may be out of order, but anyway, I'll show you something. We have voted on that it will work, and this is hopefully what we have in our deal with the public.
Yeah, right.
I understand.
Is it that presentation Brian had? He saw it the other day. Brian did it. He did a presentation in law here.
Yeah, Tim came out and he appreciated his, his time to have that.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that.
And I said this at that meeting the other day, which everybody supposedly I thought was going to be invited, but I got to notice an hour before it happened, but, you know, I made them very aware that you're not going to see it in the budget because of $20,000 you're going to see, which is like when you use the word assignment. It'll be done, that'll be done later, you're just not going to see that in this budget, so don't freak out when you don't see that money allocated. And also to say that I would like to see that the Wager Jim, the air conditioner in that project.
I think we said that would be important.
He would always should have been waiting to do it.
I agree with that too, man. There's a few more that I want to share too, so go ahead. Thank you very much, appreciate y'all.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I did not cover that in the summary. I meant to add it in there, but I didn't, so that's why.
We had Laurel Hill the other day, I said, so they could know.
Where did they meet?
It was Monday morning, it was 10:30 or something like that. Todd called a day after. Yes, he called me at nine o'clock, so we felt we'd meet, and I said, no, nothing back.
I'm going to ask you.
You may need to wear masks, not so healthy.
You can't get up either. Oh, gosh. We got about Laurel Hill. Just want to take a minute to tell you, we certainly hope you will have enough funds to build that local purpose building at Laurel Hill. We talked about it from the ninth of January, that we do, we move our oval. I'm hoping, and so is the public, we can get this done in next budget year, 20 and 12. So I know you will do everything you can to have.
We'll do everything we can because we're going to do everything we can to make it happen because we tore down everything you have. It's not because of.
Yeah, you know, it, it just, it's such a thing to do, but when that storm came, the auditorium couldn't be repaired, and we checked the other two buildings, and we thought it would be between seven and eight hundred dollars to repair those, but we said, well, that won't make good sense. And so at that time, some of our people did that with heart, but once you invite, talk about what is being caused to be repaired, everybody, everybody was kind of, we would put it in a, a more car. The guy was still saying, no. We really appreciate it. I'm, I'm sure we would have had more people here, but the virus has kept them away. I hope some. Absolutely. I guarantee, obviously. So I think you got one good. Thank you. Let me say one of those. Brian was a lot of help to us, he came to Laurel Hill Monday, and we all been having a great meeting together. We should thank the two of the local people that have been there.
Did you show me the slide, Sam?
Sir?
The slide, did you show me the slide?
The PowerPoint? Yeah, I got it. Okay, Mr. Cott.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what we're probably going to do.
And you can handle some more drawing, the Wager's building, which is what we're going to agree on, you can leave. So, but he's not, thank you, brother. Thank y'all. Let me get you out.
Jason? Good evening, I'm Jeff Shelly, lifetime resident of Laurel Hill. I'm going to try not to beat a dead horse in saying we need this in Laurel Hill, y'all know that, I don't need to reiterate that. There's a lot of people that, it would be very advantageous to us to have, especially for our young people, have a place to play on Sundays, older folks, a place to exercise. And also, I know, I can speak from personal experience, when we had the other facility, my family used that facility for family reunions. So I think it's going to be very viable to the community at Laurel Hill, and the community that, I mean, Scotland County as a whole, you know. So like I said, I'm just hoping that you guys will carry on with what y'all said at the meeting with church and the pines, and get this community center.
But we're committed to that chair, if you can put that in the bag.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming. But three people at a public hearing for the budget, that's tying a record number for us.
A lot of good people out there, they really care about Laurel Hill.
I think you said today, they not letting officials lay around.
No one else out there?
No, that's it.
All right, and I, I'm going to close the, I'm going to hear, and mostly the closing.
Second.
Our chairman of call, your special members corporate membership discussion.
Okay, um, wait, do you hear me?
I can, if you're speaking into the microphone, I'm good.
All right, um, this, uh, item that I'm bringing up tonight was brought to me, and it is about the county having a corporate membership at Scotts Meadows Country Club. The background is that they offer a corporate membership for $1,000 a year, and it gives county employees the option of participating in membership at the country club at a reduced rate. And all of us here have a paper that outlines those figures. Currently, the school system, the city, the healthcare system, and Scotts Village are all taking advantage of this for their employees. So my thought was to bring it tonight, to present it to this board, and there's only six of us here tonight, this information. I did learn today that we can't vote on it tonight because this is a special call meeting for the budget, so we can't take action, but we can take action next Wednesday when we have the budget up, when we approve the budget. It's a, the cost is $1,000 to the county, it is a benefit for our employees at their option, there's no mandate, it's all voluntary, and it's just one way to let the employees have a little bit of a benefit that we can afford and is naturally to the cost of the county.
So that one valid is whether we have twenty four weeks to two months.
Yeah.
It doesn't change.
So I'll present this to my fellow commissioners to look at and study, and we will hopefully take action on it next week. I'll answer any questions if you have.
Is it something you could do, if it's more competitive, that you can do as a payroll dividend?
The actual membership would. Those we, we do some, but we generally, we're trying to avoid that.
Easily done, I think, over the day, right?
It is, it is. But I think the biggest attraction in this membership from what I'm hear out of the community is having access to the pool. Membership, pool membership, where you don't have to have the full monthly membership due, you just make a one-time payment of $300, and you have full access to the pool for the whole summer for a family. That compared to other places is a very good rate for a pool membership for twelve weeks.
Compared to owning your own pool, because.
If you go to other cities in the area and try to have a pool membership for the summer, it's going to be $500 to $750.
And I don't think you, your offer.
But, so, anyway, this is FYI for my fellow commissioners to consider, and hopefully we can offer this to county employees next week.
I have some, you feel it, you don't need to say it. Okay, um, I have something, I've got a reading, that's a lot of talking, I talked too long. I don't think we have permission to ignore the protests that we have seen up here the two weeks. And things have changed. Life, it's, it's no longer going to be exactly like it was. People, community groups, boards will, will have to take a hard look at how we do things that we took granted before. We got to look at our policies, and we have to look at our laws, and how it affect people, you know, people lives. Let me read this actually, and then you can go on and, and do what I said, a closed session. First, I'd like to express our sympathy for George Floyd's family, with, and I don't think none of us have had a chance to say that, and we can't ignore what happened because we have thousands of people all over the United States and the world reflecting on this. Next, I would like to reflect on the, on what has been happening in our country and around the world over the last few weeks. The protest march of thousands of individuals throughout our cities and towns prompted by the horrible death of George Floyd. Truly, it is a call for change. I feel that it is time for us as a board, as, as, as a part of the community, to take a serious look at our policies and laws, whether it is our laws, our penal system, our law enforcement, our social service boards, our courts, wherever it, wherever it affects the people we serve. This is a time for accountability. We took it oath of office when we were elected by the people of Scotland County, that we would be fair, no racial bias, and, and we have to take that responsibility. We would not be here watching people start accounting both us in office. And we have to make sure that we provide the type of, like I said, laws or policies that affect their lives in a positive way. That's all.
Yes, we do need to address this with our chair, and see just what his policies are, to make sure that our folk have their cameras, because as one man said, one bad apple, it don't take the one to set your county back, it'll cost your county millions, millions, having to celebrate with family, then we got to pay insurance for the next five years to go up $500,000, I was on the board at the hospital, and just one claim can cause your insurance, well, half a million dollars a year if you sell it a year.
That can happen with just one mistake, one mistake.
And we have realized, yeah, our people are poor people, they're powerless, basically. We are their power, and that comes accountability and responsibility. You know, and whether the social service board decide you're going to take somebody's child away, I mean, it's, it's all kinds of boards, all kinds of situations. We got to be fair and just.
Anyone else have any comments? I think I may be taking a motion, if you want to close the session. The one thousand, general taxes, one forty three, tax three eighteen, part of letter A, three, consulting, attorney employee or retained by the subject's client in order to preserve. The attorney client privilege between the attorney and the subject's private attorney potential. Chairman, that pending litigation. And we need to apply Mr. Grant to not be able to change that pending, ending act. It's not potential, that's wrong. In order to preserve the, I'll let you vote on that first, but we need to be sure of that. Where do you want to take, where is potential out, change it to what? Pending or active litigation? I think it's time to print it, or, or potential without.
Don, motion.
He's got to get everybody. Yeah, now I need to get everybody except for with disconnect.